All right, it is Monday, Monday, Tuesday, December twentieth, twenty sixteen. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education for District one eighty-six. It is seven forty-nine P.M. and Nancy, will you call, roll please?
I will. Mr. Beavers?
Here.
Dr. Corley?
Here.
Dr. Corley?
Here.
Mrs. Lane?
Here.
Mr. McBride?
Yes, here.
Mr. Kripz? Is absent. Mr. Rungy?
Here.
And Mrs. Miller?
He is present, thank you.
All right, will you all stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. McBride?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have item number four. Approval allegiance, no changes?
As presented.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, do I have a second? Do you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, item number five, approval consent agenda, which includes District one eighty-six's regular board meeting minutes from November fifteenth of twenty sixteen, District one eighty-six's special board meeting minutes from November fifteenth, twenty sixteen, and December first of twenty sixteen, Tri-County regular board meeting minutes of November ninth, twenty sixteen, the Tri-County special board meeting minutes, November twenty-second, twenty sixteen, Tri-County bills dated December twenty-sixteen, applications and reports.
Motion to approve, a second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number six is approval of District one eighty-six bills for December twenty-sixteen. Any questions?
I do have one change to the bills. We voided the payment to productivity plus account in the amount of thirty-seven-hundred-eighty-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
What page would that be on?
Um, page seven, thirty-seven-eighty-six, it was on a tractor repair. We had some questions after we got the schedule of bills out because the duplicate is a payment to H&R Agro Power, this for thirty-three, sixty-six, thirty-nine on page eight. They billed us on a credit card statement and then they also billed us, which is productivity plus at no interest, and this is the old Virgin, what used to be Virgin's tractor. So, that payment stands, but it was a duplicate, so we avoided that check and pulled it off schedule.
Good question, we have a payment for a copier leases to Great America leasing? I assume that's something that Modern Office?
It is, it is.
Can't provide.
Um, and, and Modern Office does work with us on a regular basis to try to get lower, lower leases, um, you know, to, to have our, our payments be less, or this year, we just signed a lease for a couple of copiers for others that will, and I think they're only for three, three or four years, um, for less cost to the district for those machines. So, they're always trying to save us money and get us copiers that don't have a million copies of them, so.
All right, any other questions? No other questions, do I have a motion for approval?
Salute. Second.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Kripz absent, Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
And Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Item number seven is communications, Nancy?
Yes. Dear Mrs. Ayers, as you know, my wife and I are expecting our first child in February. I am applying for paternity leave, which I would like to start immediately after delivery. Unfortunately, I cannot give specific dates at this time, however, would like to request two weeks, assuming there are no unforeseen complications. At the end of the two-week period, I will assume my duties immediately. I've worked with Mrs. Brown to arrange for a substitute, I have been in contact with the substitute as well, um, as well as the parents of my students to ensure a smooth transition for all involved. Thank you very much for your consideration of my request. Best regards, Darrell Young.
And the recommendations to approve is leave.
Salute.
Thank you, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, next question.
Um, dear Murphysboro Board of Education, I am expecting twins this spring with the due date of April twenty-third, twenty seventeen. My doctor has indicated she will not allow my pregnancy to progress past thirty-eight weeks, which will be April ninth, twenty seventeen. Please accept this letter as my request to utilize sick days for maternity leave beginning approximately April seventh, twenty seventeen, through the end of the school year. I plan to return at the beginning of the twenty-seventeen-eighteen school year. I will work with Mr. Wilson to secure a qualified sub to cover my high school special education classes, as well as my caseload responsibilities during my absence. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Bailey Hicks.
And the recommendations to approve are leave.
On the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and another one.
Dear Murphysboro CUSD one eighty-six Board of Education, I am expecting my first child this spring with the due date of May third, twenty seventeen. Please, please accept this letter as my request to utilize sick days for maternity leave beginning approximately April twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, through the end of the school year. My return date will be the start of the twenty-seventeen-eighteen school year. I have worked with Mrs. Crane to secure a qualified sub to cover my third grade classroom during my absence. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Kinder Bauer.
And recommendation is again to approve the leave.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wow. I know. A lot of babies.
Wow, glad we have confidence. All right, item number eight is Fishbowl, and there are a few, so we'll start on the end with Dr. Corley, do you have one?
Sure. The Illinois Basketball Coach Association, IBCA, has released the two thousand seventeen class to be inducted into the IBCA Hall of Fame. The Red Devils Athletic Department would like to be the first to congratulate MHS Red Devils Boys Basketball Head Coach Darryl Murphy on being selected to be part of the two thousand seventeen IBCA HOF class. Coach Murphy has guided the Red Devil Boys Basketball Team for the last twenty years. During this time, he has posted a top winning percentage in school history and amount of wins. During this time, Coach Murphy has coached the Devils to nine Southern Illinois River to River SIR Athletic Conference titles, five Illinois High School Association Regional Titles, two IHSA Sectional Titles, one IHSA Super Sectional Title, and in two thousand eleven guided the team to a number-one Associated Press Final Season Ranking and IHSA Class Two-A State Summer Up with a team compiling a record of thirty-five and one. Prior to coming to Murphysboro, Coach Murphy started coaching basketball as an assistant coach under Jim Drew at Springfield Calvary and Springfield Elementary. His first head coaching stint came at Century High School for two years, ninety-four to ninety-six, before being hired at Murphysboro High School. The Illinois Basketball Coach Association Hall of Fame was founded in nineteen seventy-three to honor the best and most influential players, teams, coaches, media, officials, and friends of basketball in Illinois history. Since then, a new Hall of Fame class has been inducted every year. The Illinois Basketball Coach Association is proud to announce our two thousand seventeen Hall of Fame class. Congratulations to all, congratulations to all members on this well-deserved honor, and thank you to your, to your contributions to Illinois basketball throughout the year. The two thousand seventeen IBCA Hall of Fame banquet and induction will take place on Saturday, May sixth, at Redbird Arena in Norman, Illinois. Ticket information will be posted shortly. Congratulations to Coach Darryl Murphy on this career milestone, and good luck to his current team, which is off to another great start. The Red Devils are currently undefeated at five and oh. The team will be tested this coming weekend as they take on Heron Friday and Sparta Saturday. Lynn Navarro, Athletic Director, Murphysboro High School.
Congratulations, Coach Murphy.
Hey, this is from Mr. Keener, congratulations and thank you to Jennifer Cochran, she's one of the eight, actually number one, selected to receive an Arduino electricity project grant from Egyptian Electric. She will be receiving kits that will teach students the basic electricity in her classroom. Thank you so much for taking the time to submit your application and go on the extra distance for your students worth five hundred dollars.
Do you have another one?
No.
Nope.
It's the same, it's one from Brooke Guthman, too, but it basically says the same, same thing.
So, you're from Egyptian Electric?
Yeah, it's from Egyptian.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rungy?
This also came from Mr. Keener. Dawn Taylor recently received the Book Love Foundation Award of thirty-eight hundred dollars to spend on books for her classroom library. There were several hundred applicants and only ten teachers selected in the United States and Canada. Congratulations to Ms. Taylor for her work that has brought so many books to our students. That's pretty impressive.
That is nice, more grants.
I got a couple. First, just from Katie Hickam. Congrats to the following kids selected as Illinois State Scholars, Ethan Cook, Emily Finkie, Gary Griswold, Emma Neary, Jessica Stein, David Skokie, Connor Tinter, Haley Willis, and Tristan Gilkum. Great job, sincerely, Katie Hickam. The second one's from Mr. Hubert. At Carruthers during the month of December, all students at Carruthers participated in that hour of code for the month of December in Ms. Parr's technology class. December fifth was the third grade winter concert, December tenth was the holiday vendor and craft fair hosted by the PTO. Over thirty-seven vendors were signed up for the event. The PTO ran Santa's Workshop the week of December twelfth. The fourth grade and Mrs. Gardner's class was featured in the Southern Illinois newspaper and article featuring their work with three-D printing with the University of Illinois Extension. Today, Ms. Luking and Ms. Hanson led the school-wide carousing in the gym before classes started. That did a lot of hearts good. Bill Hubert.
Wow, that was a lot happening at that school.
Yes. Uh, this is from the Illinois High School Association, it is a sporting a winning attitude report. Uh, since we've received the attached report, on behalf of the Illinois High School Association, I'd like to commend your school for sporting a winning attitude. As you know, one of the goals of interscholastic competition is to teach important values while enriching the educational experience of the young men and women who participate. Sportsmanship is certainly one of those important values. Sincerely, Sam Knox of the Illinois High School Association. The report that was submitted was submitted by Mark Kristoff. Person commended was Coach Shay Baker. Coach Shay Baker is the varsity head rosser, coach at Murphysboro High School. Coach Baker goes well beyond normal procedures when it comes to accommodating visiting teams and officials. Coach Baker, win, lose, or draw, always has an upbeat approach to officials and opposing coaches. Coach Baker is what we want to see in the IHSA as varsity head coaches, setting fair play and sportsmanship.
Thank you, all right, one last. The school social workers at General John A. Logan and Carruthers have made sure that over three hundred kids at the two schools, as well as their siblings at the middle school and high school, have had Christmas provided for them. Kate Melinda have worked with area organizations, including Cindy Raymond's Angel Tree at the Bank, Jackson County Sheriff's Department, and Murphysboro Lions, to ensure that each child has their needs met, including clothes, coats, hats, gloves, and a few items from their wish lists, wish, wish list of toys and games. In addition, they have organized over sixty different community angels to shop for their students and personally shop for at least thirty additional kids themselves. This has taken hundreds of hours over the last month in addition to their regular duties in the school. Furthermore, it should be noted that at least a dozen teachers from General John alone took an angel off the angel tree to personally shop for kids themselves. I am sure the numbers are very similar at the other schools in the district, and that's submitted by Carla Ayers. Almost said the president, the principal.
One more that I didn't hear, and that is on the, the Egyptian Electric Co-op that, that gave the five hundred dollars to Ms. Cochran at the middle school for the Arduinos, um, in addition gave five hundred dollars to Carruthers. Uh, the Egyptian Electric did, I think, I believe they awarded four or five grants, and one of them went to Carruthers, they got grow lights. Mrs. Carter and Mrs. Green are, um, starting some, I don't want to say hydroponics, but uh, some, some potany, I guess is the right term, they're gonna grow things, and they're probably gonna go outside to that little area at Carruthers where they've got a garden started, so, uh, but, that's another grant that got it.
There's a lot of good things, there's a lot of teachers that work really hard to do great things at the school, so thank you for everything, and thank you for sharing that with us and letting us know. All right, item number nine is the freedom of information requests.
Not quite as many as Fishbowl items, but we had a few. Uh, SEIU Local Seventy-three out of Chicago requested information about employees, position, salary, hours.
Who is that? What is that organization, do you know?
It is a labor organization out of Chicago, SEIU Seventy-three, and, no. Better Government Association, also out of Chicago, request similar information about payroll, collective bargaining agreements, contracts, budgets, legal settlements, um, both of those, a lot of that, we ended up just having to give them links to our website. And last but not least, SmartProcure, we've gotten their FOIA information down to a science. We just, they do this, it seems quarterly, and we just generate the report for SmartProcure and sent it off to them about which, um, purchase orders we have and which vendors, so, um...
Is there any way to tell, are these agencies also requesting other school districts?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They are. It's our blanket, which is they are.
Yeah, and, and we missed one this week, we, uh, I was with the other superintendents, we missed one from, I forget the name of the company, but, um, locally, a lot of them got another FOIA that we didn't get, so.
You missed, oh, good. All right, item number ten is recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy two point two-three-oh, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action by the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. First, let me ask, are there any concerns from the public? All right, what about employee concerns? No? All right. We can move on then to the old business. First, we have a financial update for Mr. Corley?
Yes, and this is that you're gonna hear the same thing over and over, still no budget for the rest of the state, so December thirty-first, there'll be that whole, um, news articles about the social services, you know, the half-year budget's gonna be going again. General state aid, we are giving our money, it's not prorated yet. Without a budget, there's no state revenue increases, and their expenditures are still deficit spending. I do want to point out that we've not gotten any of this year's categoricals, I know that Jan said it during the hearing, um, and that's just a detail I want to undermine. Prorating our general state aid was bad, not getting any categoricals is worse. So, when they, you know, they're, they're, the politicians are getting some leg, some benefits from saying that they're fully funding us. We haven't gotten general state aid yet, so if you hear someone say we're fully funded, say yes, we're getting our general state aid, but we're not getting our categoricals as of yet, um, and we did check today. The new funding formula, the governor's commission, the, um, as they get closer and closer to February, I've told you that they're getting more and more off the tracks, more and more organizations are coming in and demanding this, demanding that, and again, that formula is still underneath the pillar of property taxes, so it is still going to be a bad formula, a regressive formula. It is, um, if they go to the evidence-based model, will be loads better than the general state aid formula that we currently have, but again, you still have that philosophical property taxes as being wrong. Also, the way that they're doing it, so that no districts would feel the pain, they're slowly gonna add that money into the new system, if they get a new system, so it's only new money, so that no districts that will, uh, will, will see a, um, a reduction, even those that are spending close to thirty thousand dollars per kid. Finally, I want to share with you an article, A Path to Fiscal Sustainability in Illinois that was written in the opinion piece on Wednesday, December fourteenth, although it's an opinion piece, David Merriman and Richard Die, co-directors of the Fiscal Futures Project at the U of I Institute of Government and Public Affairs, wrote this opinion. They do it with a lot of research. It is, um, it is attached with a report that I can give you the link to, but they point out that FY seventeen budget deficit for the state is approximately gonna be thirteen billion. They point out that given the current tax rates and spending pattern, patterns, the annual deficits will hover around fourteen billion for each of the next five years, okay? In addition, Illinois has a hundred and seventy-four billion, billion, that's with a B, unfunded liabilities, and ten billion dollars currently in unpaid bills, with fees that get added on to that. They point out in here that our analysis shows that even significant increases in personal and corporate income taxes, four point seven-five to six point six-five percent, what they did their calculation, would cut the deficit by only four billion or so per year, which is not nearly enough to close the gap. So, we talked about property taxes, and no one wants to see that, now they're talking about income taxes, four point seven-five to six point six-five, almost a two percent gain in your income taxes, um, won't close the gap. Goes on to talk about the deficits, the cuts, all this other things, and what's the policy choices could lead Illinois down the sound fiscal path? Our analysis demonstrates that only by doing all of these things, cutting spending, significantly raising taxes, broadening our tax base and growing the economy, can Illinois gets its fiscal house in order, but it will take at least a decade of sustained fiscal discipline to do so. So, if we got a budget this year, they're still projecting a decade of pain and suffering while we try and get ourselves out of this hole that they've gone to me, and so, um, there are fiscal issues. I, I know that we've got to be, um, as responsible as we can to try and do what's best for our kids and our community. I do want to work with Mr. Boss and the county on how we can try to, uh, leverage any changes to grow the economy. Capping the property of, uh, of property would, would not be a bad idea if we can do it without hurting the general state aid, you know? Possibly a tiff, we tiffed businesses, maybe we could do neighborhoods, I don't know. Um, I will also say this, one of the things that Governor Mauder has thrown out there regarding a, um, a grand deal, he wants Medicare, workers' comp language, right? He also wants a tax freeze. Now, what he, what that tax freeze is actually talking about would be this extension that we're sitting out now, that extension would be the same extension we levy every year. We can't change that. That levy would always stay the same, and our property taxes would always stay pretty much stagnant, for us, provided they do that without it hurting general state aid, okay? Meaning, if they pass that law, that's gonna cap our extensions. It would have to come, in my opinion, with a contingency that we won't get penalized, because we're, we're maximizing our property taxes, right? We're extending the fullest capabilities, and you only reduce when you don't capture that. For us, for Murphysboro, that would not be a bad thing, if I was talking to Terry Bryant or, um, Mr. Schumpf, uh, I don't know, select a phone, but it's Mr. Schumpf now, um, that would not hurt Murphysboro at all. Carbondale would scream bloody murder, it would be the same as taking us, we're sixty percent general state aid. You prorate our general state aid, we see no growth in our general state aid, we see cuts in our general state aid, we, we start screaming. Their sixty percent property taxes, those extensions, Carbondale would say, no, 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 that's just here in Jackson County. You've got the Cowler Counties that have the economic growth, they're capped, those school districts get two hundred dollars per kid in general state aid. Carbondale gets close to five thousand, you know, they're, they're, they're with us with general state aid as far as the amount relatively, um, that I don't see the governor's proposal for that extension to work, just because there'd be so many districts that would not be able to function, it'd be, they'd be in the same boat we've been in for the last five years with the proration of taxes. Um, that said, I see the logic behind the tax freeze, I get the frustrations we all have with the state not doing what the state's supposed to do, um. We gotta make hard decisions and hard choices, and with that, um, that is my update.
What's the amount of the categorical, categoricals that were?
Jan, you said like what, one point?
One point five, nine, over four quarters.
So, when they do their PR and say they're funding us fully and we've got an extra two hundred thousand, we actually lost one point five million.
We lost close to five million over five years of GSA. It's almost a million a year. Categoricals will take out a million five.
Right.
And, and there's no certainty, I mean, in the past, when they've delayed payments, we've gotten those payments, those categoricals, but I don't know.
We're still waiting for quarter four of last year's categoricals.
So, that's like transportation, they pay buses and anything, we use those for us, we're footing the bill for that, whatever.
So, before, we were getting our categoricals, but we were getting a million less each year in general state aid, so now, we're getting a million in general state aid, but we're not getting one point five million, so we're half a million less coming in now, even though we're fully funded.
Yes.
Thank you, state, okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Corley? All right, let's move on to item number two, under old business, which is the adoption of the tax levy.
We've heard the, the, the community and their frustrations, um, I wish I was going to tell you that I don't feel very much the same way, however, logically, the recommendation is to approve the extension as presented, otherwise we will further cause us more damage.
I will make that motion.
Mr. Rungy, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mr. Kripz absent, and Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
All right, item number three, under old business, is the...
I do have, um, this is gonna be the longer, typically when we do the district policy, and I apologize for that, but this was a historic district policy, yes, you should pass these out, these are just some of the stack that we have, not the majority of these, um, items. A lot of them had to do with law changes. Although the state has not been giving us a budget, they've been extremely busy with various, um, other unfunded mandates. It's also the federal government, the No Child Left Behind Act, which then was called the Race to the Top Grant, is now the E-SUP, the Every Student Succeeds Act, a lot of this board policy got, um, reflected in that as well. Specifically of note, Board Policy two point one-two-five and five point six-oh, your first page is five point six-oh, and that's teachers and their, um, expenses. Two point one-two-five is board members and their expenses. Uh, we're gonna look to follow the government website for the amounts, um, this would be where you look at the, how much do you get per day if you're gonna go eat? If you don't go to a Chicago trip, Chicago costs more, and there's an actual website that tells you what the allocation is for those expenses. Um, it's a per diem upfront, receipts and change will be brought back as this policy goes. Um, in this policy, there is a resolution that we're saying we will pass regarding how and what limits of, of expenditures we can have, that, uh, first comes the policy, next month will come the resolution. There's also gonna be some exhibits, we're gonna need to change our processes of how we look at and record receipts and just make sure that we are extremely transparent. Anything that goes outside of this will need to be voted on by the Board, uh, as far as just making sure that the, uh, amounts of money are processed with, but really, five point six-oh is the teacher policy, two point one-two-five is the board policy, um, I think you all agree that those two should be absolutely the same. Of note, in other areas, um, there's other policies that changed, just the ASA requirements, uh, foster kids is a big one. All of our social workers are now being named as our foster care, uh, representatives. They are our homeless liaisons, we've got, if a kid becomes homeless, we, our social workers are the, are the contact person. Same thing now with foster care, we needed to register with the state, who was gonna be our foster kids, um, representative. Foster kids are not homeless, you can't spend homeless money on them, but if you suspend them, you do need to contact the state, um, if you do things with that, because the foster parents are not the legal guardians, the state is actually the legal guardian of them. Just out of fun, five, uh, Policy five pen one-two-five, removed MySpace and added Snapchat in social media, so if any of you have a MySpace account, you need to get rid of it. Um, it's no longer going. There was a bunch of instructional changes, and those were just legal things that came in your pockets. Lastly, though, um, seven point three-oh-five, we'll talk more about the expenditures next month, but seven oh three-oh-five, I'm, um, I want you to look at, it's regarding our concussions, specifically on the second page of that. Specifically on the second page of that. On the second page of that, item number eight. It reads, and this is in addition, include a requirement for certified athletic trainers to complete and submit a monthly report to the Illinois High School Association on student athletes who have sustained a concussion during, one, a school-sponsored activity overseen by an athletic trainer, or two, a school-sponsored event of which an athletic director is made aware. Now, we have a concussion policy. Um, we don't currently have an athletic trainer. How much was the cost increase? We were gonna see an increase of what, ten thousand dollars or so?
That was huge.
Yeah, it was always twenty. Twenty thousand dollars, increase in athletic trainers. So, we didn't renew our athletic training. You don't need to have an athletic trainer. We've been absolutely fortunate that, um, Dr. Corley provides those services to us pro bono. Because he does it pro bono, and because he's a board member and not a, uh, uh, hired by us through this, um, whether or not we need to submit that information to IHSA is kind of a question. We want the policy to be reflective of whether or not we're gonna have an athletic trainer next year. Um, Dr. Corley, do you wanna share with us the number of concussions we've had this year? I know that.
Over fifteen and probably eleven just in football. It's been unbelievable.
We had a student last night that was brought to the emergency room. He was knocked out cold. Now, the doctor at the emergency room doesn't say that he was concussed. However, Mr. Wilson is, I don't know if he's contacted you already, but has said that that young man's gonna need to go through the, we wanna do the concussion protocol because he got knocked out cold. He got his head hit. And so, even though the doctors aren't saying he's concussed, we wanna, you know, this is, this is.
I've never heard of a loss of consciousness not equaling concussed.
I do not argue with doctors. I will not argue with you. Nor will I argue with the fact that he came back that way. But I think that Tony's absolutely right. We'll, we'll, we'll do the screening and treat him just because he's not, you know. But we need to give this some careful thought because, um, including this requirement puts an undue burden on us. And for the years that we don't have an athletic trainer, what do we do? Do we expect Dr. Corley to continue to provide those services? This is where we get into those unfunded mandates. And again, the state has not.
You're referring to the, to filing the monthly report.
Yes.
I don't see how we get away from that at all. Regardless, whether Mr. Corley is pro bono or not, that has to be provided to the state.
It's required according to law if we belong to IHSA and have a certified athletic trainer. We don't at this time have a certified athletic trainer, so it's not required by school code.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're splitting hairs with that.
And that's where some of these.
They even have athletic officials that have to go through this. So, there's no way that we're gonna, we're gonna be able to get away from that.
Okay. But then I want to. We're gonna need to, um, discuss because.
We're gonna have to hire an athletic trainer to sign off on this report.
And this is where, I don't know if you saw the news thing, but the whole new law that they're trying to pass where we'll have to give every fountain in every building that's both, that was built before two thousand, a lead test. What do you do if you find lead in your water? And again, you know, I, I want an athletic trainer. I don't want lead in my water. But what do we do when, when, when?
When we have the money to do those things.
To do those mandates, yeah. So, it's, um, I am gonna ask that we have another subcommittee added to the Board, and that would be a policy subcommittee. I would, I would recommend it be the Board President, whoever that should ever be, and then the, um, I know Mr. Krips isn't here for.
I agree with that for the next few months.
It should be the Board President and, and another representative. Do I have a volunteer to sit on that committee? Again, this is uncharacteristically large policy updates. They're usually not this much, but I do feel like if we're gonna start having these board policies, I do a lot of as presented. I'd like to have a subcommittee that, that goes through and talks about these things and understands some of the nuances. You, volunteer, Mr. Corley, Dr. Corley.
And I will myself.
Yeah.
I know everybody wants to sit on a committee about policies, so I'm glad we can beat them to the punch on that, Dr. Corley.
Thank you.
You know, one, one more thing, due to the large amount of concussions, they have a, an apparatus they put in football helmets that allows whoever's on the sideline to gauge the impact the player is having. Uh, I'd say eighty percent of the concussions we've had have been on the football field. Um, it gets a little tricky sometimes with symptoms. You know, you gotta, you don't see it, or you got a kid throwing up. Is it dehydration, you know, uh, but with the concussions being the way they have and being so dangerous to the kid, uh, neurologically, um, I think it would be a good thing to get this apparatus. Um, I think we have to get seventeen new football helmets this year. Um, the cost to, each helmet would be sixty-five dollars more per helmet. We'd start small, have these helmets as, you know, the starters, uh, linemen, guys who get hit all the time, and, uh, kinda slowly build from there.
Are they like airbags where once they pop, they are no longer?
No, no, they reset.
I just don't wanna, I mean, sixty-five bucks extra per helmet if it's.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, they gotta.
Yeah, no, it's just a little, it's just a little thing in there. Yeah, it's a, it's a little, little piece of a, of, of equipment.
So, it just gauges the impact?
Yeah, gauges the impact. And there's a number reading that comes up. And if it goes past that number, the kid got a wall. And so, if he's throwing up, he's got a concussion. If it's under that number and kid's throwing up, he's probably not concussed. And we don't have to make a emergency ER visit and, you know, take this kid's, uh, world around, you know. So, uh, I don't know, just from what I've seen in the past few months, I think it's a no-brainer in, in terms of safety for the, for the child. Because not only does it affect the athlete, but it affects him in school. He can't sit in cla- or he or she can't sit in class. They miss class time, uh, 'cause it's return to play, return to learn. Um, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, and, and I completely, it's hard to argue against it because it is the, you know, the security and the safety of the kids. But there's also comes a point where, um, I almost feel like maybe we, we, maybe football's too dangerous. I mean, the other solution is with a million dollars of not getting categoricals this year, it's, it's, and I'm, I'm, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, the, um.
I know, you don't want the words out of your mouth, but at some point, when we start talking about cuts, there's only places to cut from.
You know, the state's in a hard position right now. And, and I, I read an interesting, uh, or heard something, I don't know where, I can't cite my source, but, uh, it was a discussion about possibly taking all the pads off the football players. Would there be less injuries if they played?
Go back to the old school leather. I think they had it right back.
Less, less, less helmet on helmet if they're, I mean, if there is no helmet.
Well, you think about it, you get bigger, better helmets. They think, oh, man, I can run through a brick wall now, you know what I mean? So, you know, uh, which isn't the case. It's not good for their head.
The, the recommendation is to, uh, approve the board, the district policies as presented, um, with the understanding that with the expenditures, a resolution will be coming next month with some forms. I, and, uh, with the, um.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the policies as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, okay, all in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Alright, moving on to new business. Number one, adoption of the waiver.
Yeah, and, uh, the recommendation is to approve the five-year waiver to allow our employees to be able to bring their children, should they live out of district.
Alright, you heard the recommendation?
So moved.
Thank you for having a second.
Okay. Sorry. Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Kripsabson? Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Moving on to number two, the twenty sixteen seventeen seniority list.
Informational item. This is being provided to you at the meeting. A copy is going to be sent to each building. Um, employees will have their ability to raise objections, ask questions. Um, we'll have the recommendation at the next board meeting.
Thank you, sir.
You're sitting in a second seat.
Moving to closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed sess- session, present to Section two of the Open Meetings Act, five Illinois compiled statutes, one twenty slash two subsection C, to review the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district and pending or threatened litigation.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mr. Kripsabson? Mr. Rungy?
Yes.
Dr. Corley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lane?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you.